First up is the Lathir Village Police Department Recruitment Effort and Signing Bonuses, Bonus, and it's funny that this is on our... It's funny that this is on our agenda because I was gonna ask about this the last time, so.
Before we jump into that, yeah, just announce where you're participating from and who's here.
I am in Lathir Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Bruce Cantor, Harbor Springs, Michigan, Emmett County.
Tulip Siddiqui, Lathir Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Ian Ferguson, Lathir Village, Oakland County.
Madam City Manager, have we heard anyone from Councilwoman Solings?
Yes, she called and indicated that she is unable to attend today.
You know.
Requested to be excused.
Thought today, though, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, back to the LVPD recruitment.
Okay, well, as you know, we've been having some challenges with recruiting officers here in Lathir Village as in many communities, and the last couple that we were attempting to make an offer to someone else snatched them up. So, the chief and I were brainstorming on what we might be able to do as an option, and one, he created the flyer that's in your packet, but also we were looking at offering a signing bonus, and we were working with the labor attorney to make certain that we're not doing something contrary to our union agreements.
Okay.
Have any benchmark on what other cities are doing, just before we open discussion?
Different cities are doing different things. One of the reasons that we lost the one officer here, and they went to the city of Southfield because they had more opportunities for promotion and they had more divisions, so that if you're looking for excitement in those different types of investigation activities, we're too small a community to offer that.
Yeah.
And what's mentioned on occasion is some officers are looking for the defined benefit retirement plan as opposed to the defined contribution which we offer.
Yeah. I mean, my first glance at the bonus is that I think it may be too low to attract anybody. It's $500, it's, you know, it's a laptop from Costco if you really think about it. That's not gonna attract qualified police officers to Lathir Village. So I was just trying to figure out what the benchmark is in other cities and what kind of incentives they're employing.
We would have to look, and that's probably worthwhile, to take a closer look at what others, because I know many that I saw were like in the 2,500 to 5,000 range.
Yeah. I'm not saying give away the farm, but you know, whatever, whatever is within our, you know, balanced, you know, approach to it, we should try to entertain it.
But isn't our annual salary higher than most places, though?
I haven't done a comparison.
I'll give you the comparison of, I know for a fact, like, for instance, for Detroit, their salary is maybe almost $30,000 difference. So it depends on, to me, where you're trying to attract talent from, you're picking it up in your salary instead of trying to, you know, put it on the front end of the bonus, $10,000 to $2,500. So it depends on where you're attracting it from.
Yeah, and I think Lathir Village has a pretty generous benefit package as well, which is why I had the chief include some of those items in the flyers so that they can see that it's not just the salary, but they do get a lot of pretty attractive benefits by working here.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that.
So just wanted to give you a highlight of a direction that we're going in to try to attract a qualified and hopefully even diverse pool of candidates for our police department.
Yeah.
And they have to be IMCO certified?
Yes. So this is relative to officers that are already working with someone else and want to come here as opposed to someone who's just graduated from the academy.
I know there are officers that have asked me about hiring here, but they did not go through IMCOs because they came out of the military straight to, I forgot what they worked for, but they didn't go through IMCOs.
All right, so they're military but not working presently as a police officer?
As a federal agent.
I see. I mean, that's worth a conversation. The one officer that I recall who approached us, he didn't have the associate's degree.
I remember that.
Yeah, that's our minimum, right? We have to have an associate, which is what I think Chief said, Chief McKee said that night.
I think that's a little bit different than.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Gracias.
Okay.
Next, the cannabis, primary caregiver ordinance amendment. I have tons of questions, but I'll let everybody else go first.
And we have Jill with us today, and Jill, if you want to provide an overview?
Sure, I can provide an overview. So I think you have in the packet, and I think we maybe talked about this before, but we came to our attention that there are some potential caregiving establishments for people registered as primary caregivers under the Michigan Marijuana, Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, the first one. Back when this act was established in 2008, I think people weren't really sure where they were gonna go. It was very vague, the act itself, the legislation in terms of any kind of local regulation. But there was a recent court case last year by the Michigan State Supreme Court that did suggest that communities can regulate the placement of the location in certain conditions through zoning of caregiver establishments, places where people are growing cannabis plants for their registered patients, and get those out of the residential neighborhoods because of some of the negative impacts that we're all experiencing. So the Planning Commission prepared this language that they'll be holding a public hearing with you all on February 8th to get this zoning amendment established in a, in short order. And I'll let Scott, if he wants to chime in on anything else that's related to that, or if you just wanna go ahead and ask us questions.
Yeah, I can just, you know, just to add, because one of the biggest areas of confusion with this is that this is something that's separate from what we're doing with respect to recreational marijuana as well as medical marijuana. This is closing the loophole that many are beginning to exploit, going back to the 2008 ballot language like Jill was saying. And what we've found is that because there is really no, Lara's really not regulating or issuing any license or requiring any sort of applications for these caregivers, it's simply a registry, and evidently the tracking system is somewhat lax. So if I wanted to be a caregiver and I had five patients, I can register as a caregiver for those five patients. Evidently, if I have another five patients, I can also register as their caregiver. So there's, some individuals are building quite the following and growing a significant number of plants as caregivers. So this is a, this is an area that, with respect to medical marijuana, we didn't have to do anything when that language came out. We were opted out by default. With respect to recreational marijuana, we did our ordinance which opted out because by default we were opted in, and this is closing that 2008 language. So we're not saying you can't be a caregiver, we're just holding you to the same standards or putting you in an area that the city can do some regulation, some enforcement, less impact on the residents, and then leveling the playing field with the other potential users that we will be seeing potentially with the recreational ordinance revision, so.
Thank you. So when I went through this, one thing I was starting about is it said something about the grid, the... What's concerned for our, not energy grid, what is it called?
Talking about power?
Yep. Um... So under the potential impacts and considerations on page six. Because of the electrical service that has to be plants, how series of, with everything that we have on regarding how much we lose power in certain sections, how significant is this on our electrical grid, do you think?
Well, it really depends on how many you have. I mean, the, these types of facilities, the wiring in a residential home is not, you know, I'd say probably 90% of the homes are not wired for that type of power demand. Generally, you see DT has to bring in a bigger service, which means more power into the house, and then again, the wiring that's through the existing walls is rated for a certain capacity of use. This intensity of lights and use and air conditioners, humidifiers, other things that they're running in these facilities far exceeds what the safe levels for these, for residential. So Jill's point about that is that, yeah, this definitely demand on the grid could cause some power outages, but it's really more about putting them in facilities that are designed and built to be able to handle this, this load of electrical use. Ideally, we don't have any like industrial or industrial zones in our community, but this is, this is where a lot of communities are putting them because, because those facilities are designed and built to withstand that type of, that type of a use load.
And we're looking to have, I mean, the idea was along 12 Mile.
Yeah, and our office district is where this overlay is intended to go.
The reason for that is that the Southfield Road Corridor is really intended to be more of a, and we have it in the master plan, the mixed-use area where we have shops, we have offices, but it's a customer and a consumer in and out all day long. Those areas along the office district are very different in that they're very low intensity. They do have people coming and going, but it's not like a retail establishment where people are stopping and coming and going all the time. So we felt like that was a better area than along Southfield Road for that reason. We didn't want those uses to take up potential retail space that could be used in a way that's more intentional for that area.
So wouldn't 12 Mile be ruled out because it's 1,000 feet from schools?
No, well, there's a portion of it on the west side.
And there's a school on the west side, I mean, on both sides. Pace Academy is, not Pace Academy, I forgot what school it is, is in Southfield that is on 12 Mile, and then you have, of course, Lathir University High that's on 12 Mile and Bussy, which, I mean, still considered, I know, I don't know what they're doing with the building right now, and then there is a tutoring place that's right on 12 Mile that's for children.
So I, it doesn't look like the map is included, was included with your packet, but, I mean, it does knock out a substantial chunk of 12 Mile. It's really, whatever is east of, or just, just east of, I think it's Guy, right there, from Guy until...
There's like three.
Lathir Boulevard is basically where it's at.
So it doesn't count, as I asked my question before, Scott, so you're saying there's only schools that are in Lathir, not adjoining cities?
No, we've mapped out, it would include schools adjoining cities.
If I don't, how could it go down to Lathir Boulevard and there's a school that sits right there at 12 and Lathir Boulevard?
They are.
See, are you able to share your map?
Yeah, I was just gonna do that. Let's see, here we go. I want, while here, I'll minimize you guys, and, wait, share, hold on, sorry. There we go, that's what I wanna share. So here's the, this is the buffer map that we have. So the Bussy Center you can see is up there, and it counts, I think, the, I don't know if you can see my little cursor moving around up here.
Yes.
But that's that school I think you were referring to, Kelly, on the north side.
I don't.
On the east.
School.
Well, the Bussy and then over on the east side, just north of Lathir Boulevard, this little hatched mark.
I think that's Bedford Woods Park.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, okay.
Because the school sits on 12 Mile, so it'll be right there.
Is it the Crescent Academy, is that?
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah.
I'm looking it up. Um... All right, well, that looks like something that needs to get added to the map. It looks like that school maybe has been there for some time, since 2004.
Yeah, it's an older building, I think.
The one problem with charter schools is they tend to bounce around from facility to facility, so they may have been existent since 2004, but maybe not with that location.
Right, it doesn't, it didn't pop up on our.
They've been there for a while, and the only reason I know that is because of coming that way from taking my own son back and forth to school, to Angel, to, I don't know what other schools he went to, I'm done with school so much, I forgot the schools, but going, I had to go down 12 Mile, and I remember that coming back is always gonna pain with the buses going into that, into the school.
Yeah, so do we know that it's an actual school? I mean, the one, the one, I walk by there all the time, and I was always under the impression, and I could be wrong, that that was a place that they store a lot of the buses for.
It's actual school.
Their, their school or for another school system, because I don't really see kids going in and out of it, but I do see buses going out of there empty and coming back empty a lot.
No, that is an actual school, and if you lived over on 12 Mile, and if you were coming over that way between seven and eight o'clock in the morning, I'm gonna give it a bigger thing, between seven and nine, trying to get in and out of there and the traffic that it caused with people turning in there, it might not be anybody going in there now because of COVID, but I'm 99.98% sure that it is an actual school.
All right, well, that would explain why I've never seen it, because you all know that I am not awake.
Exactly, I know you.
Yeah, it's a school.
Like it, and it's got an address down there at the bottom. All right, so, yep, please just... Confirming on their map, yeah, their map shows the same thing. So that's one that didn't show up on our, in our database of schools, so it's why it's not on the map. But you're right, once we put that on the map, that's gonna be problematic for that district.
Yeah, so it's probably gonna limit us to just, just west of, of Southfield, right, to Guy?
Well, then, that's my other question, is that there is, when I was reading this where it says something, where is it, where is it, where is it, about, something about children and, well, the licensed childcare center was one, but then there was another...
Well, we put in the temporary emergency shelter, too, that's a 500-foot buffer, that's their SOS shelter.
Yeah, not that one, it's, I can't remember the name of it, it's right after Guy, between Guy and Southfield, and it is a children's tutoring center. Comes real crowded on Saturday mornings, awesome.
Yeah, typically, that is not the same thing. I mean, you could make it the same thing, but it's not intended in this ordinance to be that.
Yeah, and I think we have to, to consider, too, that there are no requirements, this is, I mean, this 1,000 foot we're taking from.
Right, I was just gonna say the same thing, Scott.
So we do have the ability to, you know, kind of maybe make it 500 feet for this. Again, the purpose of this ordinance is to get, so that we can enforce in, against the grow operations, these caregiver operations that are primarily taking root in residential neighborhoods, and this, this gives us a mechanism. We can't say, you can't be a caregiver, but we can say you can be a caregiver, but you have to be located here, so we have to give them someplace to go, otherwise it's, you know, essentially, we're zoning them out of, out of the city, which we can't do, so. The, the primary objectives are to level the playing field with the other, the other potential uses coming in, and then also to make sure that they're not located in residential properties that are not, not built for them and not, not desired by the neighbors that are living there.
Yeah, and given, given that they're not retail establishments per se, you know, maybe the 1,000 feet, or even maybe, I don't know, it might be too extreme, but even any distance, you know, requirement may not be necessary.
And so how would that affect us? So basically, let me ask first question before I said second thing. How would that affect us when it goes to trying to zone or put the ordinance together for the possibility of allowing marijuana, period, in?
Doesn't have any, any impact on that ordinance whatsoever.
Right.
I think that, well, never mind, for my thoughts.
Well, if you have additional questions and...
Yeah, I mean, now's the time to get it out, if there's questions or thoughts, so.
Yeah, I, I think I would be comfortable reducing or dramatically reducing the distance requirement for, you know, for, for this kind of, this kind of use, given that it's not retail, so.
And I really feel that this is really being shoved down our residents' throats, and just from the letters and the comments that we've got, I understand about not pushing them out where they don't have room, but it's, it's also kinda like, just here, go wherever you want to. So I think that there does need to be some type of limitations in place. I think that's the right thing to do, I don't think that they should be adjusted. I think that in consideration of why, for me at least, why I was elected is to represent our constituents, and now all constituents are for this, and so just opening the door and limit, and reducing the, what's it called, the footage from children, especially, I think that that's not, in totally my opinion, not responsible.
Well, that's, that's exactly what we're doing by putting them on 12 Mile, because the alternative is doing nothing, and they could be right in the middle of the neighborhood next to anybody's children.
Yeah, right, right now, these uses can go anywhere, they could, they could set up shop in a, in a suite next to that charter school if they wanted to.
I get that, I'm just saying, what was just said, though, was to limit the, not make it where with the 1,000 feet, did I hear that wrong?
You heard that correctly, that was to accommodate those parcels up on 12 Mile, to reduce the buffer somewhat so that those parcels are available to be used for that purpose, because otherwise, to that point, these uses are in neighborhoods, they are happening, you could live right next, you could live next door, I live across the street from one. I would be, if my children were living here with me, I would be very uncomfortable with that. But that's, I mean, that's the way, that's how it is now, you may not even know who they are at this point, you might not, and I don't know that the city has an idea of how many homes there are like this in the city, but that's what this would, would try to regulate, is to say, we understand that you have every right to do what you're doing, and we're just trying to locate you in the place that makes the most sense for our community.
Yeah, so for, so for me, if it came down to, you know, they could be in the, in the residential area versus setting up a site on 12 Mile where we had to, you know, reduce distance restrictions, I mean, that's the lesser of two evils as far as I'm concerned.
If we kept the 1,000-foot restriction, like, where would, there's not much, there's not many locations for them to go, right?
No.
And is that, does that, does that put us at risk for, like, somebody said zoning them out, would be, would we be at risk there?
If, if we said this is an office overlay district, and then the 1,000-foot regulation consumes all of the office district, then really they can't locate anywhere. So it's essentially, you're, you're regulating through zoning to, to an area that they, they can't locate, there has to be some opportunity for them to, otherwise, it's been, what the court said in that Drew case is that as long as you, your zoning ordinances don't eliminate your opportunity to provide that service, then they're considered reasonable, and that's paraphrased, but, but basically, we have to, we have to put them somewhere that they can locate, and again, this is not, this is completely separate from, from the other types of medical and recreational uses, which, which are, as Jill said, those are more customer-oriented type businesses, that we wanna make sure that we leave spots for them in the commercial corridor, we don't necessarily want our city to be full of caregiver facilities, because again, these are not facilities that are gonna be paying the $5,000 license fee, we're not getting any revenue sharing on any of the profits that they're selling. So these are, these are essentially largely unregulated businesses that most of the regulation and policing falls on the local policing authority and with not a lot of enforcement ability. So these are not, these are not the types of cannabis uses that we would want in our community, I mean, I think what, what the city's setting themselves up for is, is to have a couple, a couple of those, the facilities that we've been discussing, that, that are gonna, the city's gonna see some return on that, so. But these, again, we can't, we can't preclude them, and right now, Bruce is absolutely right, there's, there is no limitation, they can go anywhere in the city, which is why we're acting with some urgency. I spent an hour on the phone today with a resident that lives directly behind current residential grow facility, expressing her concerns about these facilities and, and what's going on in the neighborhood, so, so they are out there, and they're, you know, it's in the news, other communities are having the same problem with these facilities, and again, it's, I think word has gotten out, it's a workaround to some of the more expensive, more heavily regulated cannabis-type facilities that a lot of people are jumping into, so that's kinda why we're moving this along quickly, is because we wanna try to get out ahead of it before it gets out of control, and then also... it gets out of control. And then also if, if a facility is lawfully established, then once regardless of when this ordinance is adopted, they would have a legal non-conforming status and, and we wouldn't be able to regulate or remove them from a residential district.
Hey Jill?
Yes.
Is there any reason why we didn't include 11 mile east of Southfield Road? I mean, there is, there are some offices there as well that would, would be very similar to what we have along 12 mile. It's a small space. I don't know if, I don't know if there was, if, if there were parks or anything that, that are distance.
No, we didn't. Well, and it's, it's right. It's in a buffer zone, so it doesn't really add anything to our equation if we added that in. But I was just thinking if we, it, it seems to me from where that those facilities in Southfield are, north of 12 mile, that those aren't particularly, those aren't super likely to have people walking by on, on the south side of 12 mile to access those facilities. So we could do 1,000 feet from school unless there's a school that's across a major mile road, in which case the distance could be reduced to 500 feet. So it would keep everything on the map the same. But when we add in the other school, we're reducing that setback and that may make a difference. We could also. A bit further even.
We could also.
There's no crossing there.
Sorry.
I'm done.
I was gonna say, we could also eliminate or reduce the buffer that we have established for SOS. If that was, that opens up a little bit more space on Southfield Road or on 12 mile, I'm sorry.
Seems like we need to reduce the buffer at least somewhat to give these, you know, give them, give these businesses an opportunity to locate somewhere. Otherwise, we're at risk of not giving them that opportunity that opens us up. We, I think we gotta do something. You know, if it's at 1,000 feet, there's really nowhere reasonable for them to go, right?
Right.
I'd maybe reduce it to 500 feet. That gives them more space.
Yeah, I, I agree, Salim. I think we should, we would need to reduce it is, is, is as, as little as we can to provide enough space that we wouldn't be legally challenged about zoning them out. If I said that correctly. I think you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, exactly.
So Jill, would you be able to offer some alternative maps based on what you're hearing today?
So what's the average buffer for most cities or is it? Pardon me?
It does depend. Some communities keep it at the thousand feet and others have reduced it or even eliminated it. It really depends on what the facilities are that they're permitting and where they're located. I know a few communities have like in industrial district, like Scott was saying. But then if there's a school next to it, but they really want it to be the industrial district, they might waive that buffer, make that buffer smaller so that they can accommodate it where they want to accommodate it. And then just try to address that other issue in another way.
So we don't have an industrial area. So I'm, I'm asking for like cities that would have no industrial area. What's their average of a buffer?
I think that would be, we, I'm trying to think of other small communities that don't have industrial districts. I can, I can try to look into it, see if I can find any.
I would like to know the like cities that don't have industrial areas, what's their, their buffer to it? And which I, I found interesting also, just, you know, eyebrow raised is that it's still, and I know it's the business district before I get beat up on, but on the back of it is still residential too. So that's just something else I was just thinking about. So, yep, if you could find that out, that would be wonderful because I really, I mean, if the average of a similar size, similar situation city is 1,000 feet and we adopt the same ordinance, I, I'm curious as to know how that could be that we were zoning them out. Wouldn't that look like that would be the average?
Well.
Because we're not giving them, because we wouldn't be giving them the space.
Right. So I know what you're saying. And, and you're looking at, you know, the setback to the setback. But the other factor that we are using here is that we're saying it's only in this one geographic area that we're going to allow it. This is the only part of town that we have office districts. So if we have that here, this is kind of what I was saying before about the community that has industrial and that's where they want it to go. Like this is where we want it to go. So if we want it to go here, we can't buffer it out because then we won't have anything. It's like, you know, telling somebody, you can, you can go here if you meet these criteria and you don't meet the criteria. So you really can't go here. So then there's no point in even having the ordinance, right? So the challenge is not just looking at the buffer distance to another community's buffer distance, but where they allow it. So if we allowed it everywhere, then the other community allowed it everywhere, then we could look at buffer maps because we'd be looking at the same information.
I still would like to know what the average is, the ones they have. Thank you.
Isn't there a state requirement, isn't there a state requirement that is in play here regarding schools?
Not for this, this, not for this particular use.
Okay, just only provisioning centers?
Yeah, the, the, these are, you're comparing apples and bananas when you're looking at provisioning centers or marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries. These are patient caregiver grow facilities. So these are not retail establishments. You can't, anybody with a marijuana card can't go in and purchase marijuana from these facilities. They only theoretically are only growing marijuana for themselves and their five registered patients.
Okay.
Anything else? Next. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, and this ordinance will be on the special meeting on Monday, on February 8th. We'll start with the planning commission to take it up and they'll make their, the public hearing, make the recommendation to council. Then council will then take their action.
Thank you. Technology upgrades.
So we're trying to make it easier for staff and for the residents to be able to interact and take care of business, especially with offices being not as accessible as they once were. And we never know when there might be another shutdown coming. So one of the features that we want to incorporate is with the, I'll start with the point and pay. The point and pay, which is the ability to have credit card and e-check payments more easily. We now have both government to government, G to G through Oakland County as well as the official payments. And the G to G is not, it does not interact with the BSNA system. So one of the features that we aren't able to make available to our customers is like if they're getting a building permit, they can't use their credit card to pay for it. So this would integrate those systems so that we're able to have, take the credit card payments in particular. And there are some other shortcomings with them. So just utilizing the point and pay, it would be all synchronized. You can also have the option of the electronic billing. So it, it just makes it easier, easier for us administratively and far easier for the citizens and business owners and contractors to be able to interact without having to, you know, get a form. They can do that electronically, but they still have to come in and make the payment.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good move.
And I was talking with Pam earlier today, we could, so we would, as we move forward, we would eliminate, eliminate the official payments, but we would probably keep the G to G just to have a backup because it doesn't cost us anything. And the county does pay a small percentage back to us when we do use it, but at least we would have a backup system in place.
Yep. I think several years ago, we were having these discussions and
Yeah.
we were at a point of no return. We didn't know where to go. So now here we are. The future has caught up with us. I'm feeling good about it.
So, you know, if you have to pull something positive out of having a pandemic, it kind of forces you to look at your business practices.
Right.
So the cost is $400 for setup and $50 a month. Is that right for point and pay?
Correct.
Okay. That seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
And do you have any limitations on the type of credit card? Because I know AMEX has a higher fee or, or something like that.
I didn't look at the credit cards that they accept. It looked like it was most of them, but I didn't look at the specific cards and the associated fees.
Yeah, you might want to look at AMEX because they usually have a higher fee. And I don't, usually the, the, the.
It includes AMEX.
What was that?
It includes AMEX, Discover, AMEX, Mastercard, Visa.
Okay, didn't see that. Sorry.
Any other questions?
And then the other one is the ClearGov. Well, as we had talked, I think a year or so ago, we were talking about how we can move towards having to be meeting the standards for the GFOA, the General, what is it, Government Finance Officers Association Standards for Budgeting. And one of those component parts is the how it interacts and how people are able to access information. So this basically makes it a cloud platform. So it's always accessible. We don't have to go through the printing. If someone wants something printed, you could just print out the section that you want and not have to do the entire booklet. It can be updated instantly. So as we're doing modifications, we're able to have it reflected in the digital book. The department has, can also take some control of their section in terms of the, the information that is shared relative to their departments.
Okay, so wait, let's, can we go back to the, the other one? Because am I looking at something different? Because I see that that one was $500 a setup fee for point and play. Am I looking somewhere wrong?
Unless I did a typo. Is it in the packet?
My packet says it's set up for 500 and.
Yeah, the bot, the last page, page 30 of 59 says $500 setup fee, $50 a month.
I thought I saw that, I heard Salim say it was 400. So I just didn't know if I was looking at the wrong thing.
The, the memo said 400.
Okay, so it was a typo. So it's a 500 setup fee.
Okay.
And now going to this one, is this something that we've already gone into an agreement with?
I, I have a tentative agreement. In order to get into their system for the month, I signed the agreement, but it has the caveat that if you, if council does not desire to move forward, then we can cancel without any penalty.
Do we have another contract for something with ClearGov or am I thinking of something else?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I, I just, I just may have seen it before.
So I am trying to understand what is the price of this after? Is it 1,875 per month after June 30?
That's the total setup. I'm trying to get the figures in front of me.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's prorated. So it's, it's $4,500 a year. But for this year with setup, it looks like it's 1,875. At least that's what it says in the memo.
Normally it'd be $4,500 per year.
Yeah, so if you go to page 57, and that's essentially the service order.
Yeah.
So it shows at the beginning. So now there would be the 1,875. Then in July, it would be the setup fee and the annual subscription fee and the subscription fee is the 4,500 a month. I'm not sorry, 4,500 a year.
So in.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Kelly.
In addition to the 1,875 subscription fee that's going to cover from February 1 to June 30.
Correct.
And then you start the annual on July 1st for 5,700. So that'll be annually. But then this one time fee of $1,200, that's also a setup fee. So how many setup fees do you get?
Right. It was, that was my question as well because it says, it says one time above and then.
There's the one time setup fee of the 1,200 that's not payable until July.
Yeah, we're not getting hit with that.
We're not paying that up front. Only thing you're required to pay upfront is the subscription fee, which is prorated and that's the 1,875.
Makes sense.
So the 1,200 is part of the 5,700?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was because I just spoke with them and saw the presentation and I told them that it wasn't incorporated in our current budget. But ideally, we would want the current, current budget to be in this platform. So this allowed for the least upfront dollars to accommodate it.
You, you said you have an agreement with them. So when do you need to make a decision on this?
Well, I told them that we had the meeting today, so I wanted to get a consensus from council if it was okay to go ahead or not.
Can we make a decision today in a study session?
I just wanted a consensus.
Okay.
But technically, this is already in effect.
Unless I cancel today or in the next 30 days, yes.
So that's what I was trying to also find out because I don't see that. And that's, I only see 60 days of the, oh, that's annual renewal.
If you'd like, I could have a demonstration set up for council this week. I think I will give you a better idea of what it offers and if you want to proceed.
We talked about, we talked about this like, like months ago, right? A long time ago.
Yes.
And, and this is the purpose is, is going to be to assist you with, and our staff and like put together the budget and keeping track of meetings and things like that, right?
Well, this is the meeting one. This is, that was a different platform. So that was the MUNICODE for the
Okay, right.
Meeting and the meeting agendas. So this is specifically for budgeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Might be a good idea to have a demonstration to see if it works.
Good idea.
But I think also just in case the council for some reason says no, that there, I just am concerned that I don't see anything that says that you can cancel within the 30 days, within 30 days.
I mean, it's nothing that you had signed for. You just said, we just need to finalize, right?
It's signed.
I signed the service order. So yes.
Okay. Can you find out about the 30 days? I, I think that's a valid request.
And at the bottom of page 57 is the customer satisfaction. It says the first 30 days of service, customer shall have the option to terminate the service agreement with that, with written notice.
Where is, I did not see this. And that's what I'm trying to find. Where, what page?
That's the first 30.
At the bottom.
Okay, then the first 30 days, okay.
Oh, 57. Sorry, I went too far down.
58.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, so you have until March 1st. Nope, you have until February 28th.
Just so I'm, just so I'm clear, to back out, we, we're not sure if we can based on, you need to find that out.
No, it says right there about the customer satisfaction under general terms and condition on page 57 in that last little thingy.
Yeah, I think that allows us to back out if we don't, we're not happy with it or we don't want it.
Oh, is there time tomorrow or Wednesday that works best for everyone to try to get this demonstration?
Oh, you're saying outside of our house of meetings. All right, I'll take that. I'll retract what I said because I am out of sorts all week.
Yeah, tomorrow is bad.
I'm not free until Thursday.
Are they available now?
I'm not available right now.
Okay, I got you. Okay, I got you. I'm just trying to make it work. I mean, tomorrow is kind of, kind of crazy.
When do you have it done by? Or when do you want to have it?
Well, we're starting the budget process now, so in order to have it available, we need to get it started so that they have the information they need to input all of our data.
I'd like to be able to see how it works, but I mean, if, if this is a worst case or hey, we need to make a decision today, and.
I'll contact them to see if we can just set up a couple of times for demonstrations, and hopefully you can fit into one of those scheduled times.
Maybe, maybe two of us or whoever can make it can just give it a glance and say, yeah, it's good.
Tomorrow is 7:00.
7:00 PM?
Yep.
Let me, let me look at my calendar. Not available in the day is just kind of brutal. Let's see, I'm looking at my calendar here. Yeah, I could do 7:00 PM.
Me too.
Okay.
All right. I think I could do 7:00. Is it 30 minutes?
Yeah.
You said 15 minutes?
Well, with your questions, for me, it was about 15, 20 minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, I just sent it.
Appreciate it.
All right. Ready for.
Budget calendar? Unless somebody else had any more questions?
No.
Budget calendar?
I tried to put together ahead of time all the dates we have to take into consideration for the budget, including the, the actions that need to be taken by the Planning Commission relative to the capital improvement plan and the DDA for their budget to come up with a tentative schedule to get us through to the July 1st start of the new fiscal year. So, that draft is in your packet on page 59. And two particular points I want to draw to your attention is the scheduling of a, a goal-setting session. I wasn't sure what date, and I think I put a tentative one on the March 15th study session date, if you want it there, if you want a, a separate meeting to let me know. And your, my evaluation as the city administrator, I think I included in there somewhere. So, if there's anything that you think doesn't fit or needs to be moved, to just let me know.
I don't see your evaluation. Where is that?
May 3rd.
Oh, sorry, I was looking too high there.
Does anybody need to, any dates stand out?
Well, they all look fine, I mean.
They look good to me.
As of now.
April 18, 2020 though jumps out at me, because it goes from April 16th, 2021 to April 19th, 2020, and then we go back to 21.
Why not? Why not?
It's called back to the future, right? Or I guess it's back and forth to the future.
Change some things and come back, yeah. Looks fine.
And Suzie, did that look like it worked for you for Planning Commission and DDA?
Yes, it did. Sorry, took me a second to find the meat button.
Anybody have any other questions or anything? Okay, city administrator updates.
I included in the email communication that went out, my report to you, including the upcoming meeting dates, with the next one being February 8th, a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And as you can tell, I'm experimenting with the closed captioning that's now available through Zoom as opposed to a, a third-party add-on at a cost. So, we'll see how that looks on the camera. Will be closed Monday, February 15th for President's Day. And also as a reminder, Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner Jim Nash is scheduled to meet with us electronically on February 12th, and that information is included in the link as well as in a separate email to all of you. As a reminder, the winter property taxes are typically due on February 14th, but this year it falls on a Sunday, and that Monday is President's Day, so it is actually extended until February 16th for the winter property taxes. And we've received some initial documents from the Realtor for the, in response to the RFP for the House in the Woods. And I forwarded those to Scott, and I think we're planning on having that on your council agenda on February 22nd for your review and approval. And Mr. Redstone's moving forward with the space study for the police department in the space downstairs. And with the water department, we're updating the website to incorporate some more detailed information for our residents as well as the location of the lead and copper service line survey information. So far, we have, I think, 79 residents who have responded. It's included at the bottom of the water bills, and we're probably going to have to do another, a special mailing just to get everyone's attention in regards to that. We'll also include it in the upcoming edition of the Your Town magazine. And we had a meeting today with revised in regards to updating our website, so we're excited about moving that forward.
That's a great idea. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah. Has, has all council done the survey for the, for the water?
Yep.
Other than?
Yeah.
I don't think I did it, to be honest.
I did it, but what's the follow-up from that?
Yeah, I've done.
Well, if you, if you did it, you should have received a letter from us. We're only required to send a, it's an information packet basically to residents who have identified as having a lead service line. But I've had letters drafted for everyone regardless of what the material is identified as to receive a letter. So, if you haven't received a letter.
I don't think I received a letter.
I don't recall getting one.
Yeah, I did the, I did the visual service line inspection, but I didn't do the survey, I don't think. I can't, it's just been cloudy, so I'm saying no, just to try to do it, basically.
It, it, it did take a while for the letter. I was the first person to do the survey. I did it as part of the, our test of the survey, and I, I didn't get the letter until last week, so there's a bit of lag time.
Yeah, that, that's why I don't recall. I know I did something, I just don't recall if I did the survey, so I can redo it, if, if that's what I need to do.
Redo it.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I'll check to see if your addresses are on our list, and if not, I'll send you a reminder.
Yeah. Send me the link also, please. Appreciate it.
Is it an E newsletter?
That's right. Oh, yeah, you know, that's the other thing, you got to talk about the newsletter, but go ahead.
Okay.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
I said Cheryl, are you?
I'm done.
Okay. Um, I forgot I was going to ask what I said. I'm afraid of going down this road, so I just won't do it, but go ahead, Ian.
No, no, I'm good.
I thought you said you had a question about the.
No, it's okay, I, I will talk to Cheryl offline, it's fine, it's, it's nothing.
Okay. Anybody else? Thanks.
Are we on, are we on council comments that we're, or?
Yes, yes.
Uh, just I have a couple of questions. Suzie and Cheryl, are we moving forward with the tree committee?
Yes, I had a meeting with them on Thursday, was it Thursday? Whatever day with the 28th was, I met with Perry and Roger. And we had a good meeting. We talked about, I mean, it was mostly just, hey, let's chit-chat, get to know each other and kind of brainstorm where, you know, where everybody is at. We talked about maintenance, how, in education for the residents, and so I'm going to talk to Chris about possibly doing like a home, an urban forestry, home forestry kind of class. Maybe we can get some of our, our avid gardeners to help us out with that. We talked about re-establishing that tree purchasing program that the city had done many years ago, and I am going to be reaching out to some of our neighboring communities to see if maybe there's a way we can work together on bulk purchases to help drive down those costs. And kind of, you know, figuring out if that would be a good thing for us. And then we also were, we are going to apply for these different DNR, there's a, there's a DNR urban forestry program as well as the DTE energy tree grant program. Both of those will be released later in this, like late spring, early summer for applications, so we're going to be talking about that as well. And meeting again in March, we haven't set a date just yet, but moving forward. I've asked them to invite people they think might also be interested in participating, so.
Okay, and then just a one, just a quick, quick update on the sidewalk program, are we getting anywhere on that? I know we wanted to try to bring that up in the February council meeting, is that moving along, hopefully?
Somewhat. We incorporated the information that was in the C Click Fix into the overall database that we had in regards to the conditions, and I asked Rami to also double-check, especially the neighborhood south of 696, to make certain that the information is current. So, we're doing that process so that we can get an estimate of what's needed.
Okay. And then the only other thing I had, just Cheryl, we had a resident submit a question, was trying to get somebody from the city to get back to them. They probably didn't use the best format, which was Facebook. So, if you check our city Facebook site on the emails, they sent an email in there, I saw it this morning, or this afternoon.
What was the question?
They didn't say, they, the basement is backing up and their, their plumber wanted her to get some information from the city, and she sent it via an email on Facebook.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Um, anybody else? Anything for the good of the cause? Is there any public comment?
No.
All right, and I, I think that we're all good, we'll be meeting, oh, Monday, I think.
What, what time is that meeting on, on Monday?
6:00.
6:00, great, thanks.
Okay.
Tomorrow, you said you sent it out already for tomorrow, right? At 7:00?
I sent the request to the company, so I'm waiting to hear back.
All right. Well, that's all I have, I don't have anything else.
I don't either.
The only thing I, I will say, after, I said I had a conversation with someone today, just Cheryl and Suzie remind our code officers that they can't go in the backyards, people's property unless they have permission.
All right.
Can I ask a quick question? The, the shredder truck, I haven't seen it in a while, has it officially stopped for the winter?
As in the tree shredder?
Yeah, tree shredder. It usually is supposed to be making their, they make their rounds on Fridays, but I haven't seen it in a couple of weeks.
That stopped a while ago.
I thought it stopped in October.
Yeah.
Was it October? And I, I thought it was, I don't know, didn't know, okay.
Usually it's on the calendar, on the front page of the website. If you go to the calendar, it has the date.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, Pam, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, I was just going to ask Cheryl to include me in that meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Oh, that's all. I'm sorry, Suzie, you have anything you want to add?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, good. All right. Well, thank you all, and we will talk tomorrow, and we will talk on Monday, and we will talk
Thank you.
I'll see you guys.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.